...America and two people for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please, please, being both video and audio taken, may I record it in the audience's room, so please inform the board.
Mr. Gang.
I will...
Will that be a meeting minute?
I am, sir. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, as written.
All set? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We will go to all business. Mr. Lavash, you have the... Mr. Gang, do you have any old business?
Uh, yes, just following up on the unregistered vehicles. Um, all locations were checked, suspected vehicles photographed. They're in the process of identifying the owners so that they can, let them know that they do need to take care of that situation. That is still ongoing. I believe there were five locations that were checked, and if anybody knows of any others, you can go on my webpage, let me know. And we'll have them take a look at it.
Sounds good.
Could you make that list available? Of the...
Yes.
Of the locations?
Yeah.
Um...
I can check with Bruce on that first.
Yeah, let me, let me check with Bruce on that first.
What did we establish as guidelines, unregistered and vehicle? How many can a person have before it's not legal?
One. We established that last week, sir.
It's in the bylaws.
Right, I read that.
Yeah.
But we weren't sure last week. Everybody looked, and nobody made up their mind what the one was, was wrong.
My understanding is we did, and it was one.
Okay, I don't say it different, but that's all right.
Okay, all right. Uh, that's all I have for old business right now, sir.
Uh, just a couple of things. They have the Friends of Town Hall has the, the Polish dinner this Saturday evening at the Senior Center. I believe it's five and seven, is that correct, Beverly? I'm sorry.
Five and six thirty.
Five and six thirty, I'm sorry. Five and six thirty. Um, so hopefully they'll have a good attendance for that. There was a mention last week of Doris Dumas and the Golden Kane. Uh, we spoke to the clerk's office regarding that. Nancy's a little bit busy right now, but we are looking into doing something for the resident. Um, so we're, we're trying to locate it and, and go from there, so we do have people working on that.
I'm sorry. Are tickets still available to the Polish dinner, and where can they get them?
I think we're just about sold out.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good. I'll be there at five.
We'll be waiting.
And just, uh, go back on the issue that we had on Reed Street, uh, with the well water. Um, there's a link on our website, it's a D V for well testing companies. Uh, it was put up on the website for those residents who need the context. They have their well water tested, so... I'm sorry. Yes, Igor.
I want to interrupt, but, uh, the tickets, there's still limited number of tickets available.
How would, would someone get them, sir?
And you can get them, it's, it's by calling four three six five three eight nine. And it's running on the calendar on the C T twelve.
Yep.
The number is, they'll list it if anybody wants a ticket.
All right, four three six five three eight nine?
Correct.
Okay.
Both seedings, or?
I believe it is limited amount for some seedings. It's very tight. My wife was counting it today, so it's very tight on the five thirty seating.
Okay.
They have some for six thirty seating, and I think they have some, uh, takeouts still.
I thought I got the last two.
Well, just...
It's tight.
So call the number, anybody who said they called the number, and they will get an answer one way or the other.
Okay, great. Thank you, no problem. Thank you. So just to go back to the well testing, there's a link available on the website. Uh, we have reached out to some rural development in the state to see if there's possibly some funding options and availability, if we wanna try to help out. We're trying to coordinate a meeting with some departments, uh, within the town, uh, water departments.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I was talking to Rachel today.
Yeah.
If the state is gonna come out and do more testing, do testing farther down the street. So she's gonna let us know the results farther down, how far they know.
So i- i- it is really a, a big concern right now. Uh, the board's taking this very seriously, so we're looking at some options right now. Um, it doesn't seem like the problem's going away. It seems like it's spreading, so there's different departments working on it. Uh, this board's actively working on it, and we're seeking assistance through the state, so I just wanted to mention that once also. And I think that's all I have for old business, so... How many concerns? Anybody? Oh, yes, ma'am.
I know I'm new. Um, I just have a question. Has there ever been a survey done of how many people, how much, how many people in this town do not have vehicles who have to walk?
I don't believe so, Mr. Lavash.
The reason I ask this is I first moved into town, uh, last month, and I did not have a vehicle. And with there not being no bus service in this town, it's very difficult for somebody to get around. I did not even, thank God I have a sister who helped me get a vehicle. But, you know, I see a lot of people walking in this town that, you know, they complain that they don't have no way to get out of town. You know, there's no, no places in town, like a pharmacy, or, you know, uh, even trying to get up here is an extra mile and a half from downtown. And, um, just wondering how many people don't have vehicles and how much of an inconvenience it is for the residents.
Well, I can tell you personally, I, I, I know there's a few that don't. Um, and I know, I, I was speaking with our, our town planner about a year ago. We, he had mentioned this through C M R P C, they were talking about a public transportation option, but, uh, it, it really went nowhere at that point in time. It was mentioned a while ago. Um, I, I think it's a concern, but I don't know if we'd ever be able to pull public transportation through here based on our population and the amount of people that we, we would have. I, I think, um, it is a necessity, but I don't know how we're gonna get to war with a resident.
Some of the people in we are actually looking at that and working on that now. Um, my understanding is the nearest bus going towards Worcester is Brookfield or East Brookfield?
It's East Brookfield. It's pretty far from here, it's not within walking distance.
Right, right, but my understanding is where they would probably look first is Route Nine. So I'm not sure if I can make a call and see if that's still being worked on.
I mean, I have a vehicle now, but I'm just thinking of the other...
But just so that I can let the people know, 'cause there's probably other people out there in the same situation where that is at this point. I believe it's still in the investigational stages, but I can at least, uh, try to find out if there is something going on.
That'd be great. And I just have one more question.
Sure.
My father was a handicap person, and I found that on Main Street, there was many buildings down there that are not handicap accessible. And I am wondering why they're not up to code.
Well, I, with the project that's coming in this summer, I mean, not all of them are, um, some of them are. I'm not sure how much of the project this summer is actually gonna rectify that besides just the paving and out of downtown. Um, there's going to be a bike, bike path put through, um, some other modifications to the center of town. Sorry, is there something I want to say?
No.
Oh. Um, I, I do believe some of them are gonna be robbed. I don't know exact, I can't answer exactly how many of those will be, um, but I can look into that. I can find out.
Yeah, 'cause like if you go to the bank, you can't get in the bank. And if somebody wanted to go to the library, you can't get in the library. There is no handicap, at least for those two buildings that I know of.
Okay.
So...
I, I don't think it's gonna, I, I don't think it would i- impact the library and all with the project that's going on this summer. It might impact, uh, Spencer at the bank, but not, I don't believe it's gonna stretch as far as the library, that far back. But I can look into that, find out. Anything else? Stanley?
Follow-up question again, again. Our Detective Chase, I understand now he's not being paid by the town. I understand that Mr. Sloss Stein received a memo on how to handle the situation, and I'd like to know if we could get a copy of that memo and find out what's going on with Officer Chase.
Regarding, well, he's...
Whether he's employed, unemployed, retired?
He will be, but I can't, I don't have the answer actually if it's official as of right now. It's close to an end. Um, I don't know if either one of you have that answer, but...
I understood he is retired.
I believe he is, but I, I don't know for sure.
So he's still being paid by the town?
Through the county retirement, not through the town.
Not if he's retired.
He's retired.
Well, you told me last time he was retired.
No, he's, he's, I'm almost positive he's officially off.
I'm saying he's not being paid by the town if he's retired.
He's not in the town.
I understand, but last time I asked the question, you said he was not retired that you knew of. Now I'm asking the same question.
No, the paperwork can process, the paperwork has come through. I'm not sure if our treasurer has actually finalized the paperwork, consented it into Worcester County and Parry, but I know the paperwork came into the treasurer's office. Uh, we can find out if it's been finalized.
I'll get it as cheap as money.
That's my question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes?
On the hospital trust fund that Stanley had asked about last week?
Of the amount of money that's in there? There's fifty-four thousand, fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents. That is the exact amount that's in there.
Now, is that the C. Curran Burns Hospital Fund?
Catherine Curran Burns Fund, yes.
And according to Mr. Delansky, that hasn't been touched, right?
No, there's been, you know, money that's come in and out of it.
Okay, well... In the annual report, how come it states that like in twenty fourteen, there was seventy-one thousand in there? The year before, there was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, the year before a hundred and sixty-nine, the year before a hundred and ninety?
I think you got numbers mixed up somewhere.
But, well, we had this discussion about the twenty-five thousand. You might explain that a little more?
If my voice doesn't...
Yeah, you want me to do that?
So...
I could do that and save her voice.
Sure.
The, the original fund that was deposited was ten thousand. It is accumulated up to twenty-five thousand that, that can't be touched. Everything over that twenty-five thousand can be touched. Now, there's fifty-four thousand in there that can be touched, so were you getting numbers like a hundred thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand? I have no idea.
What does that say?
I can tell you, we checked with the town accountant and the numbers that she supplied us with and the fact that there's been no money drawn from there. Um, I mean, I, I trust Madeline, uh, with my, everything, so I'm, I'm assuming this is absolutely correct. But we can, if you wanna share that document with us, look at it, uh, but according to her, nothing's been drawn from that trust.
There are other trust funds. I don't know if that's a cumulative total.
It could be a cumulative total too, 'cause there are other trust funds, but for this one trust...
No, this, this is a line item in Bill's, in Bill's report.
Without speaking to, to Mr. Sloss Stein?
What does that say?
Seventy-one thousand.
It says seventy-one nine twenty-eight last, as of last year.
But could it be for that specific fund?
For that specific fund.
And there's about seventy-five thousand now, twenty-five of which cannot be touched. Fifty-four is what is...
Well, I realize that, but, I mean, back four years ago, it was a hundred and ninety thousand. So now it's seventy-one. So what happened with that one?
So I believe that, I think what you need to do is look at the town reports. There may have been at a special, a transfer at some point.
No, no, we can't.
Can't, can't transfer money out of there.
So, if, can I have a copy of that? 'Cause I can, we can check with the treasurer.
No, it has to go specifically where it's set us aside for.
You can't do...
Then somebody must've needed it, and it was...
Or else this is a mistake in the figures. I'm right, because I don't see how you could've lost that kind of money.
So let's do this. We'll check with the treasurer, uh, but like I said, we did check with Madeline, and she confirmed what was there.
Excuse me, the treasurer was out sick.
Correct.
Okay, I will check with him tomorrow, what he's in, if he comes in.
Well, we'll double check, but right now currently there's fifty-four in change, uh, there, and there's then nothing drawn from that. It's according to the town accountant. I have that in writing here. But we'll check on that amount for you, okay?
All right, my other question, um, a couple of weeks ago, there were lights on in the second floor of the town hall. Do we know why somebody would be up there at night with lights on in the old town hall? Are they putting storage up there again? And, Mr. Lavash, you had mentioned that there was no power up there when we had...
Who said there was no power up there?
You did.
No, maybe there's power up there. There's always been power up there.
Oh. I thought you told us, the Friends of the Town Hall, there's no, there's no power up there.
Well, I, I'm pretty sure there is. I have it up there.
I know there's power up there.
All right, so why would somebody be up there a couple of weeks ago?
I don't know.
Well, we can ask the chief.
I thought that, I thought the lights were on up there myself.
Okay, and...
Tonight, on the way down here, I thought the lights were on again. And it's, it sounds stupid, but it's a reflection off the other side. When I went around the corner, went around the roadie like this, now they're off. Even on the end of down Main Street, a reflection out of, I think it's a, a gas station, lights up that window.
Okay.
If you keep coming, you come down around the corner, you go around the roadie, it's off.
All right, we're not seeing...
Just check it that way, because I thought they were on a couple of nights.
All right.
All right, anybody else?
Tonight, I know it happened specifically, 'cause I was looking to get...
You're good? Correspondence, Jim?
Warren Community Elementary School will be hosting its annual community reading day on Wednesday, March second. Board members are invited to read to the children. I will be there on the second. Anybody else?
I'm gonna have to check my calendar.
All right. Reach out to Principal Duff. Chief LaVoy submitted his monthly fire department report as of January two thousand sixteen. The office received notice from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable that a public and evidentiary hearing will be held to investigate the proposed basic service tier programming, equipment, and installation rates for all of the rate-regulated communities en masse served by Comcast. The hearing will be held at ten A M. on Wednesday, April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, at one thousand Washington Street in Boston. Any interested parties may attend at the time and place designated. Okay, go ahead. Basically means rates are on. The Board of Library Commissioners granted a waiver of the fiscal year sixteen municipal appropriation requirement and certified warrants to receive state aid to public libraries. The award is in the amount of four thousand, three hundred, sixty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. No worries, sir.
Well, you?
I'm always good. Mass Municipal Association's spring legislative breakfast meetings have been scheduled for February twenty-sixth, March fourth, and March eleventh for interested members.
Thank you. Are you going with that?
I do not believe so. I will have to check, but I know I'm flat out on the twenty-sixth.
All righty, appointments, we have a couple this evening. Uh, I'll wait a motion first. We have one for Warren Conservation Commission for a three-year term, uh, including June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for Philip, Mr. Philip Woodford. I will wait a motion to the local.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will wait a motion to appoint. We have four proponent place A, Warren election officers. We have Tracy Missouri for one-year term, Barbara Larkin, Roxanna Noah, and Paulette. Go for it. Dorsey, I hope, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, for a one-year term, including summer thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, for polling place A. So...
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, FEMA reimbursement for Ju- January two thousand fifteen, the snow, uh, the June storm. We received our notification from FEMA in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents for the winter storm in January two thousand fifteen for the chair two signs. I will wait a motion.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One-day pouring license for a cultural council. Anyone wanna comment on that for the fundraiser?
No. Do you have any fundraisers down in the seniors? I don't think they're drawing one-day pouring license.
Hold on. Thank you.
This letter is for the request of a one-day beer and wine liquor license for the Warren Cultural Council trivia night. This event has become an annual event for the council and will be held at the Warren Senior Center Saturday, March nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, from six to nine P. M. Diane Banfield and Michelle Murray will be in charge of the table. If you have any questions, you may contact Ms. Banfield at four one three four five five nine zero five seven, or J. D. Banfield. That's B. A. N. F. I. E. L. D. at M. S. N. dot com. The proceeds help to benefit our scholarship program, their scholarship program, as well as enhance the amount of grant money they have available to give the town annually.
All right, so I will wait a motion for the one-day pouring.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Budget discussions. I'm sorry. All righty, so we'll go to budget discussions. Mr. Delansky was here first, and I think he's here for us, so we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Delansky. I know you're here to, to speak to the board of selectmen about our budget, 'cause you're our liaison, and I know Barry's here also, so I will turn it over to you, sir.
I would just like to hear you go over each individual line, and just, uh, the ones that are, stay the same. I'd like to hear any justification for increases.
Do I need the big one or not? I'll just hold it back a little bit.
It's gonna be tough.
Use your phone if you want to.
I apologize, I forgot my glasses tonight, and this is small.
With the board, with the board's and the audience permission, I'll make that work.
Would you please? Thanks.
I was gonna say you could borrow mine.
Stop getting old. I forgot my readers. Oh, yeah, 'cause, uh, what's that other, David? I wanted to, oh, I'm gonna...
Well, I've seen you in forever. I'm here.
David, you have a copy of ours?
No.
No, not with me.
You know.
I was here this morning, I was here at midnight. Wednesday's a copy at home. I'll be back on Thursday.
I know, or you can get it at nine till two. I know.
Wednesday's my work.
Don't wanna rattle off things if you don't have a copy.
I'm only on here Wednesday.
I guess you'll kinda notice.
She's got another one.
She'll make it.
Where's those?
Yeah.
Every other Thursday you'll find me roaming around.
I had, I had a preliminary look at it, and there was some budgets that went down and some that went up. Most of them stayed basically the same.
Most, I mean, there's gonna be some increases in some departments. I mean, you know, regarding ours, you get salary, you get the wage classification and changes.
Be perfectly honest with you, when I say this, and it's, it's not being facetious or anything, I really don't care about salary yet.
Okay, skip that.
Okay, it's useless talking about it until the proposal is brought forth at town meeting.
Well, one thing I did wanna point out is, is we had our administrative assistant under salary that she currently has for the last three years. But we are considering an increase to that, so it wasn't noted on there. And the one that I discussed with the writer today, it's on there. So there would be a slight increase to that. I think the overall increase to our budget, I gotta look at the number to be exact, I think it was one point four eight?
I thought it was about four thousand dollars, but I could be wrong.
I was saying the percentage wise, yeah. Yeah, we had the Google, uh, which is built into that. We actually, we're actually using a portion of that, 'cause we still have a portion of that article left over this year. So, um, a portion of that's still gonna be expended throughout next year, so we don't have to budget for the whole amount. But that's under Shepherd Building expense and under with, with the, uh, virtual town hall, included in that line there. So there was an increase to that. I'll wait for the exact numbers. I can explain a little better. Two percent increase on Maya, on liability.
That doesn't surprise me.
No. And the unfortunate part is that we haven't had any credits this year. And we did last year, we had about nine thousand last year, I think, in credits.
We had two different ones last year.
Yeah, and then we, I, I spoke about it today with the writer, we just haven't had those credits this year. David, you want a copy?
Have you got an extra one?
I have one extra, you want one?
That's as big as you.
There are no highlights there, it's huge.
There are.
Salary, I, I can kind of see that.
I don't think we're gonna increase the size of the print, but...
So we don't need to touch the salary, and I discussed, I, I mentioned to you about the salary for the administrative secretary. Uh, but you're okay with everything else that's gotta go, with the wage classification, that's gotta go to the floor. Um, I started to touch on the Google and the Gmail accounts that we have now, and the technology increase there. So a portion of that, that's not the full amount that we'll need years down the road, but we still have money left in that article from what was appropriate on the floor, and we're applying to this, and, and the rest, obviously, we had to increase that to cover it for the remainder of next year, so we're gonna expend the rest of the article, and we've added to that. I'm just looking at the highlights. I mentioned the liability, the increase on there, um, and what I spoke today regarding the amount regarding the, I'm just looking for it real quick. The increase, increase due to wages. Two sixty-seven. That's the bankies, that's salary also. The hydrants, the Warren Water District, we had the increase on the hydrants, so you see the two forty-two, the additional two hundred and forty-two dollars there to that line item.
Did you do Westmore in two?
No, they didn't put in a request. I know in years past, we've always done it without something coming in, but my view is if they need a request, they need to put it in writing to us, and not just gonna increase it automatically. So they should contact us and tell us, but Warren did, so we put it into theirs. It's my feeling, um, I don't wanna just do it just to do it, let me know you need it, and then we'll consider it. The two percent for the Maya, which came out to, um, nineteen hundred dollars, that additional money right there on the bottom. And like I mentioned, we were discussing today about the credits, and we had none that came through this year correctly, Loretta. And last year was about nine thousand dollars in credits. So we're working on that, um, presently. We're trying to do some things with some contractual language, also to help us out with some credits down the road. You know, it's, it's vital to the town, uh, having those trainings and that, so we are working on that. And, I'm trying to see, what else is on here? So if you come, if you look down the bottom, David, you'll see the due to wage increase was less than a half a percent, which we didn't discuss the salaries. That will probably change, because we may have an increase with our administrative assistant, um, so that half a percent may change. And then the total, the due to a fixed class increase was the one point three percent down the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
We have, so, sorry, the total amount came out to fifty-three, ten, fifty, or I'm sorry, fifty-three, ten, fifty was due to fixed class. Sixteen, fifty, eighty-one was due to wage increase on the two amounts down the bottom, and it came out to a one point, go ahead.
Where do we stand with the lights?
Well, we, we discussed that today also, Loretta. Um, I have an email out to, uh, Seaboard Solar to find out exactly when we're gonna start our net metering. It will start this year, so, forgive me, Loretta, what was the percentage that you decreased it because of that?
Would I take into account on the bottom portion of the chart here, street lighting? I decreased it by two percent to take into account the net metering credits, and obviously the lower volatile electric market.
So we're anticipating a decrease. We should, we're gonna see a decrease within that metering anyways, but it's a matter of that needs to go online, and we need to start accumulating those credits. And that Clinton site hasn't gone up yet, I'm waiting to hear back from, but it should be soon, so we should see a decrease in that line. And the same thing with the streetlights. We're not ready to go with that yet, so we can't budget that amount in, but we're gonna see a decrease once that, the L. E. D. conversion is complete. But we don't have a date on that, so we can't plan.
So I, I apologize, I'm, I'm, the streetlights, I didn't reflect the two percent increase. I took the two percent decrease in the Shepherd Building expense under National Grid and Hampshire Council.
Okay. What about town council expense? Where do we?
Where do we stand right now?
Where do we stand and what are we projecting?
I can't give you the exact marks. The last time I checked, to be honest with you, and I think it was only through November, was it, the billing?
We only had billing through December.
December, and I don't, we weren't over fifty percent, were we?
We were not.
We were not, we were not at fifty percent at that time, but we had billing through December. So in my opinion, we're looking pretty good. Obviously, we haven't had a lot of solar work and, and things like that, but you never know. It was, but we had an increase to it last year, but I think we're doing pretty good with council right now. We've tried to reframe from the little calls that aren't really warranted and make some decisions on our own, but some things you just have to call them. But I think we're doing much better.
Well, we, but, um, with FinCom's recommendation last year, we bumped that account up ten thousand dollars, so we were thirty-five thousand. This year, if we were to proceed with the solar project on the landfill and, and finalize the pilot on that, that would be a five thousand dollar payment from the company back to the town that would offset any costs there. But there's no movement on that, so at this point, we're stagnant with regards to legal.
And also on the L. E. D. light conversion, we're gonna use the money that we're borrowing to pay for any review of any documents for the L. E. D. conversion out of what we're, we're borrowing, 'cause I do anticipate that coming in less based on the cost to purchase, and we have put the purchase and sale up for that, so I would like to take any council involvement on that, out of that funding source.
Now, as far as the solar farms, what's the projected revenue for this year, this coming year, not this year? Any ideas, figure?
I can, I can get the figure for you. I don't have it off the top of my head.
It was an unfair question, but...
You got me on that one, but I can get the number for you. In this one, you can, Loretta, no, I don't know.
We, we don't anticipate any revenue realized from the landfill, even though we do have a signed lease agreement, there's no movement on that. The solar projects completed on Ware Road and Spring Street, although that is completed, I don't know that we're expected to see our first payment in July. So we probably won't realize that in fiscal sixteen.
Has there been any thought about going out for town council?
To put out the bid, to look for other council?
I'm not saying look for another council particularly, but going out and seeing what the cost is, if we, if we can get a better deal than we've got now, just a question.
I considered it, I can't speak for the board, but I have thought about it recently.
I, I have to admit that I was not particularly happy at the council, at the last special. I think there was some major problems there, and just a personal opinion.
Well, you know, Copeland's been around for a long time, and, 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 you know, with Pat retiring, you know, and she was a main, she was a permanent fixture here for a lot of years. And there's been some changes, I, I tend to agree with you that it was a little difficult last fall. And, but it has been a question I've raised, just because I'd like to see what else is out there, and if we could save a little money and still have a good service to the town, you know. Sometimes people, you know, you have an account for a long period of time, you get a little fat in the account. So it's nothing wrong with sharpening your pencils and seeing what you can get.
Well, I, I would think that if Pat Cantor was still there, I probably wouldn't even raise the question, but I, I am concerned a little bit with Pat retiring.
I'm looking into that one, sir.
Do you have any questions? That's about it.
Fair enough, all set. All right, I know Mr. Lacy's here tonight, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I know why you're here, but is tree ward strictly correct?
Yeah, that's all I have. Yeah, that's all I've got, so. I've chatted a bit, possibly come in and chat about some more tree ward stuff, so.
Excuse me.
First off, I think that's a pull-up for you for the tree light, the trimming.
That's for the.
Actually, you know what, if you want that one, you want their copy?
We want the original one.
So that's, that's for that. So I don't know whenever you're gonna, whenever you're gonna start that, if that's good enough, let me know, and we can start working on that.
Well, this is good, I needed this, thank you. So the, the pruning of the tree lights for the LED, it's something I asked Mr. Lacy for, because there's some poles, excuse me, that need to be taken care of when we do the conversion. So I asked for a quarter of that, which came out to $9,000, because there's about, what do you call it, twelve poles? There's, there's some.
There's twelve poles, but there's more than, there's two that it looks like they're gonna be removed, it's not just trimming.
There's some, they're buried, some of these lights, yeah. So there's some serious work that has to be done when we do this. This will be coming out of the street lighting acquisition, but, so I thank you for that. And now, your other reasons.
One second, but Gary. Why hasn't National Grid taken care of that? Are those lights that are currently not lit?
Oh, no, they're lit, or they're not, they're gonna be our lights, National Grid's not gonna trim out our lights after we own our own stuff.
Right, but they own them now.
Yeah.
So.
Well, they're not gonna do it now, knowing that we're trying to purchase them. Why are they gonna put up, put up $9,000 and sell off the lights to us? I know what you're saying, but.
I mean, it should have been done a long.
They're gonna try and get them.
Well, it should have been done a long, if you look at the fact that they're concerned about the lumens and where the, where the broadcasting, that, that their lights work and they were happy and were paying for them.
Right.
You know?
So unless somebody calls and complains, they're not gonna do it.
And at this point in time, where we are, where we are in the process of purchasing these lights, and we requested the purchase and sale agreement, it, it takes a while for National Grid to respond to, and I don't wanna muddy the waters right now.
Well, I can say I've got a good relationship with them, they do remove, you know, plenty of trees in there, but I mean, he's not gonna waste some money trimming out lights that they're not gonna own anymore.
They know we're buying them, so it's our responsibility now.
Yeah.
So, can I ask you a question? So is the 9K total removal of all problem trees or just certain problems?
The problems with poles, the ones that we need to have fixed in regards to this project.
Okay, so we're, the poles are clean when, when Ken is done, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, they're clean and they can get there, the light will illuminate correctly, there'll be no obstructions.
Yeah.
That's, that's what this is a.
They had an audit, so Selectmen and I had an audit done prior to the purchase, I guess, or the, whatever.
We had purchase, but we had the audit done last fall.
Last fall, and came up with a variety of issues. I think there was a dozen that ended up, and they, they asked me to take a look at, and I bought a contractor out, and we looked at all the ones that we had out there, identified whether to take the prunes, some of, quite a few are just prunes, and then we had a couple that really, we need to remove the tree. Because once we prune it, there's, there's unsafe trees leaning in our, in our light's direction, and once we, if we break them, we still own the lights, we could buy a new one. So there's a couple, and we just straight out remove.
And, and like what Ken mentioned also, this $9,000, it's not just kind of a few twigs here and there. Sometimes you, the tree becomes unstable if you unbalance it, so there's more work that has to be done on other sides, because you don't want that tree coming down just by cutting off half of this side of the tree. You don't wanna look in, you want it to be appropriate. So there's a lot of work that goes in and just, and just knocking off a couple of branches.
So the only thing that's not in that, just to give an idea, is please details. And there's two, a couple of those, I know, I know, need details, and one, Misty Hill needs a detail, so.
Gotcha.
All right.
Thank you for that.
I spoke with Barry on a couple items, and I spoke with you on a couple items. Since the 2011 storm, when we cleaned house and everything got picked up pretty well, we got a influx of money, and then since then, we've been level funded budgeting. So I went from a budget that was a little bit over 20,000 down to one that's about 15,000 now. And there's some products that are out there that I just can't get to. Can't keep on top of everything and move ahead with any of the products that are out there. Right now, I think there's somewhere between 12 and 15,000 dollars of work sitting in the center. There's work around the municipal, on the campus here, there's work around the sewer department campus, and that doesn't include the regular street tree stuff that's happening. If anybody's been paying attention, Humbert Ash Bor has been founding the state, and the state's quarantined as far as the removal of ash and moving ash outside of our boundaries of the state. That said, they've been in decline for the past 20 years, so, you know, like six new ash trees land on my risk, risk tree list this year alone. And I can't keep up with those and the roadside pruning and a variety of other stuff. And the roadside pruning is becoming an issue, more so in the past couple of years because we have, we're down one highway guy from where we were when I first came out. We were five, now there's four, so Tom definitely has other manpower to keep up with the roadside trimming and do mowing and everything else that was on his docket prior to that. So what I'm getting at is, I keep, barely keeping status quo with the 15,000 that I have down there, so I'm looking to, to see what you wanna do. We came across with a, a level that wanted a level funded budget, so my first suggestion was I, I do a level funded budget and then go with an article. And Barry has since talked me out of that and said it's probably better if I just increase my budget a little bit each year until we can maintain this stuff a little more. So I'm here to show you, talk to you guys about that a bit.
Where were you prior to going to 15,000?
It was, well, it's incrementally been brought back from about twenty-something, I think it's like twenty-one for, for two years before that, it was seventeen-five for a while. You know, then I'm down to fifteen. And it's been one of those cases, every year we have a cut, people that FinCom asks, what would you do if you had less money and cut down less trees, do less trimming? So I'm getting to the point that I can continue to give the same answer and, and tell the general populace that I can do less trimming and less cutting, but it's getting to the point where I really can't do less trimming, less cutting, or more is gonna end up in the rat in March, April, and May, because I'm all done with money and the trees are just, you know, dropping limbs are falling over. So I ended up with a pretty significant rat last, last spring after a storm, you know, so.
When were you 22?
Twenty-one?
When were you 21?
I have to go back, and I think it was, uh.
Let's start from the storm, where were you at the storm? The ice storm.
Seventeen-five.
It was seventeen-five.
And it went up to, went up to the highest twenty-six, so.
All right, and then it went back down, so you went from seventeen in 2011, it went up, and then you went back down.
Yeah, so it was actually twenty, fiscal year 2013, it went up, and then it came back down. And I've been okay with that, it's just like, we can't keep up with it. So with the stuff that's out there right now, I have asked, so I sort of want some, put it in front of you guys, this is, this is my one tooth that I have available between now and June 15th or something, so. I figured I could go and see you guys and get some guidance, and I know I'm gonna go see FinCom and get some guidance from them, and we'll go from there.
Well, I know you and I have spoken a lot about this on at least two different occasions.
Yeah.
We spoke again today, and I spoke with Barry. I guess my feeling on it right now is I think we need to get some immediate work done to the cemetery, especially around where we have the parade.
Well, yeah, so I want, let's talk about that. So I do know that I've got an issue there, an immediate issue.
Why did you choose there?
So Jimmy McKeon brought me into the cemetery back in August and asked me to look around at some stuff. At that time, I, I was able to give him a couple days worth of work, and that was about it. And that was to take out some stuff that was, that was immediate hazards. There were busted tops hanging over over stuff, over, over fences and over gravestones and people frequent. But we took out the immediate hazards at that time. Took a drive around, I didn't even get out, took a drive around with him, showed me some stuff, and then we stopped and looked at the parade ground area where everybody gets out at Memorial Day, and he pointed out a few things. And I wasn't really impressed with what those sugar maples look like in and around that parade ground. So I brought our, another art burst in, Jim Rust, who's Rusty Tree Service, does about half the work for the town, and we will use him. And he did an evaluation, looked at some stuff to see what it would take to take care of that, because out of all the places that we have, in my mind and in Jim's mind, that's probably our immediate, most immediate need, because Memorial Day, we're gonna put, what, another hundred some odd people under those trees. So Jimmy evaluated that for me, and I have another estimate from him on that. And I guess my hope is how we're gonna take care of that one, but that's, that's $3,900. And when he came back with it, it actually turned into, he thinks we should remove one of the trees on top of all the pruning and cable that needs to be done. So that $3,900 includes all that work. Discussion you and I have had is maybe we can use free cash there, maybe we can do it in town special. So I'm sort of looking at some guidance on that. The trees haven't fallen over yet?
So let me just ask you, did you already speak to FinCom regarding this portion of the tree ward?
Yeah, but I have a number of time.
So Barry's $3,900 for the cemetery, and that's just clean up basically where the parade area is.
Just where the parade area is.
Taking down one whole tree.
Taking down one tree, and there's, there's, I think, six others that we have to, has to be up and in, pruning inclined.
Do we use the circle as the parade route anymore?
At the bottom?
In the cemetery, the circle, where all the veteran flags are, do we go, use that as the, as the route?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the exact place where we're.
Because I was really, I was up there two days ago.
Yep.
It's in rough shape.
That's, that's the, that's the spot, that's the exact spot that we're talking about.
Oh, wow.
Right, with the little maintenance shutters?
I mean, a person going up there could be hurt right now.
Correct, so that's, that's sort of what, that's the, that's the exact spot I'm talking about, and, and. You know, I, I basically get into the cemetery when they call. They call, you know, last time I was there, it was probably, you know, right after the ice storm, and we knew we had work in there, and we did what we could, and I don't think it back since until this past year, which is around here.
So, not to get off of this quickly, but, well, to get off of this, but to go on to your pruning every year that you do do, and the amount of, I guess, distance it covers for the amount of money that you have to do some pruning? I mean, is there a, a fixed amount of space or how far you can go with what you have for funding to prune whatever you do do annually right now, what's currently there? How far does it get you?
So this year, we, I, roadside pruning, I did, Northern Street came in and did down from the top of, basically halfway at Bemis, down Bemis to the bottom, a little bit down South Bridge and across Washington. So that, that was four days, and with them and police, that was just under, I think it was just about 7,800 bucks, 7,600 bucks.
That's one mile, mile and a half?
Yeah, and that was almost half my budget.
Then what do we have, 77 miles in town of roads?
Uh, it was like sixty.
Seventy-seven miles, we gotta ways to go.
Yeah.
And I think we're in the seventies.
So, and usually, because the way it works is National Grid takes care of the wire side, but when they come through and trim wires, they only trim wire side, so they don't do anything on the other side.
I, I know what my trees look like.
Right, so, and then, and what, so what happened on this side is I, there was enough complaints on, on commercial vehicles and whatnot that I went through and trimmed these, because they had been through two years ago and trimmed the wire side. So the wire side, the parade, the other side was all down in, and it was below 16 feet. You know, so trucks were hitting them pretty regularly, I had enough complaints. And that wasn't the only place around town where I have enough complaints, but it was an easy section, we could set it up and do a little bit over a mile and, and have a pretty good impact.
So it's $7,000 roughly a mile and a half of pruning?
You can figure five to, five to six to seven thousand per, per mile.
Ken, if you had access to a cherry picker, would you be able to take care of a lot of this yourself and save the town a lot of that budget?
It's a loaded question. When you say cherry picker, you talking about a tree truck?
Yeah, basically like, like Jimmy has.
So, yeah, at that, at that level, we, I, we could do this, do that work, but for the.
Yeah, I know, but if you had access, if you had access to one. I'm thinking regionalization.
Yeah, and we talked about regionalization and something like that, which was, was ideal. Now, I never got a CDO, because I've never had one to worry about, it was discussed, and I actually made a presentation back when regionalizations was talked about, when we talked about regionalizing services. I made a presentation to that select group on regionalizing tree wards. So, yeah, so I used to have something certified, but you get everybody certified in different areas, and, and it works in a variety of ways. The guy that drives the truck doesn't have to be the guy that's in the boom either.
Right. Yeah, any pain to people who do one job?
Do you need two people, one to go in the air or two people anyway?
Well, true, one to watch, you're right.
You made it, you got two people, one to go in the air, you gotta have a person on the ground.
My bad, keep in mind, it's the liability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that doesn't change much of it. You know, and a hoisting license isn't to, to be able to get your, to be able to be certified to go open the bucket isn't much of an issue, that's a one-day class, you know, big deal.
I'm just trying to get a few options, that's all.
Yeah, so could it be utilized? Sure. And for a while, we had some guys that could cut. I think our new highway guy can cut better than some that we find, so. Depends on the work personnel that we have. Tom's actually been doing some roadside trimming since it's been snow, he's actually gone out. I can, I can commend him on some of those extra things he's picked up in the past two weeks.
Can Jim McKeon do any of that work in the cemetery?
You're not gonna get Jimmy up in the air.
No, 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 we're, we're talking about pretty high-risk trees. So it's either dead, damaged, or, you know, above, it's, it's, you know, you're talking about trimming out or, or taking down busted stuff or dying stuff or things above your head. Could he do some small pruning here and there, like he does already? You know, he takes care of some, so when it gets where he calls me, it's usually pretty.
So he's, he's done.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, but, and I, I like, I love going to cemetery, but when he calls me, it's always ugly, so. So, yeah. So cemetery is one issue over the, over the course of a few years. This first one is, is an immediate issue, I'd like to figure out what you, how we wanna take care of it, whether we.
My opinion is I would like to put it in specials, an article for the 3,900. My opinion, the board can discuss it a little bit more, but I think, I would like to get it done before Memorial Day, before the parade. And if it's on the special, the money can be allocated right away and go. I know there's been mention about a rat, but my understanding is you, you have to expend that line before you can go for the rat, and you can't expend money you don't have to start with. So how do you go before the finance asks for money when there's already money in the account to increase a line item for a repair or expense that's coming up? I don't know if we can do that.
Well, but it is an extenuating circumstance.
It's a danger.
And it's a danger, and, you know, considering now that I've seen it, I'm not sure you could have got in there much sooner than now to get it out of there anyway. So by putting that rat in there, yes, we, that usually is the plan, is to expend a line before the rat is, has been awarded. However, I'm not sure that in the timeline he's got, if he's got to get a subcontractor in there to do it, if the time is gonna allot him to be able to do all that.
Well, we, we did discuss this today, and we have, he has the quote, and if the money's appropriated on the floor at the special, he can, he can authorize the work the next day, correct? I mean, whenever they come out.
If we, if, if this is authorized, and this is, and I'll go either way, whatever, however you wanna take care of it, this is the only major party that they take care of tonight.
So what's the dating on that?
The quote itself, 251?
I mean, my thought is that people are gonna go in there shortly.
Oh, so I see, you're saying you're asking for it to get done sooner than.
That, that's my concern when I saw it, I thought, you know, this really should be taken care of now.
So can I ask you this, but when is your next finance, is this Thursday?
Thursday.
So Ken's not on the agenda, but, I mean, can it be, it has to be on your agenda by the best of rates?
We, we've put four specific things on our agenda for this Thursday. But we have another meeting the following week anyway, because it's the first of the month, so that.
So could he be put on your agenda for a request for a rat, and if you wanna go with that first and see if you can get it appropriated now?
Yeah. I can, I can go however you'd like, if you wanna go that routine, I can't do next Thursday, I can do Thursday after. I'll be out of. I'll be out of, I'm out of.
I just think it, it's not the kind of thing we should leave alone. If a person walks through, a lot of people use that as a little path.
I agree, that's why if.
I was surprised at the people I saw.
Scale of one to ten, where would you rate it as far as a hazard? You've been out there, you've looked at it.
I'd put that as a nine.
Well, we walked the parade and the wind blows, you should see the branches that come down when you're just walking, walking down the hill. I've walked it two years in a row now, and like, when it comes to stick, chum, chum, chum. You know, it just drops like leaves, it's not fall.
I, I agree with that.
So, alright, so with that, you wanna do that in two weeks with them first?
I will, yeah, if you're good with that, just get me on there, and that would be what, uh?
You've got a thing in front of you.
So, you're looking at? A tenth?
A tenth.
Okay.
You want this back?
Yeah.
I'll take that. So you're looking at a tenth for that, but then let me know what happens with the road on that, and we'll figure it out from there, so if it gets appropriated, you're, you're good to go, the sooner you're better on that.
Gotcha.
So what do you wanna do about the budget next year?
That's a good, that's the next, that's, that's the next question. So, this is what I have, and you guys are both here, so I don't know if it's palatable, you know what I've come up with, but I know ten grand is not a palatable number, so.
I'd like to ask one question, not to get off the hook. Why are we not looking at cemetery budget to do the trees in the cemetery?
Well, I think number one, he's more qualified, I'd want the tree ward.
We're still.
We're taking the money from the cemetery.
Cemetery company, why wouldn't it come out of cemetery budget to pay him and do them?
Do they have four thousand dollars in any line item in cemetery to cover that?
No, when I first came on, they actually appropriated money up to town floor for the sum of three or five thousand, it was five thousand at the time, that they used to, uh.
Right, for the tree, for the tree ward, not the cemetery?
They appropriated to do tree work.
It went to cemetery.
Yeah, the cemetery commissioner.
In the cemetery budget?
Cemetery commissioners, uh, it wasn't in the budget, it was, it was a special article. So it was whether I pulled the article or they pulled the article, that's what I'm getting at with some of these things, doesn't matter who pulls the articles, that, that ends up in there, they put the same thing, they, yeah.
I know, I was just, also, Tim was sitting here, I just wonder why it's not.
Yeah, so they pulled the article and ended up in my lap anyway, so didn't make a difference to me who was doing it, they saw that.
We can get that.
Yeah.
So.
So.
We'll go there real quick, one second, can you have a question?
I just, I, I know I'm new here, and I don't know a lot about, you know, this, but the cemetery is that dangerous, and you can't get it done by, by Memorial Day, what would be your other options?
Well, I think we would.
Flag it off and not allow anybody to access it.
What I'm saying is, what about if it's not, what about have the veteran just go in there and put the flags where they need to, and have the town march down to where the old railroad station is, and have guest speakers speak there if it's that dangerous.
Well, because it's, it's a public way, it has to be kept.
Yeah.
People need to get in there, you can only quarter it off for, for so long, and then, you know, people have to be able to access that, so we need to address it now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if I couldn't get the money, then that's exactly what I'd have to do with it, just do that.
Okay.
So.
That's a curious question.
Yeah, so.
So you have his budget, alright, Ken. I'm looking at it.
Not a lot to watch.
Barry, you seen this, I'm sorry.
I have not yet seen it.
You sure?
You might miss something, there's two lines.
I have not yet had the privilege.
So I've, I've spoken to you, I've spoken to Barry, you guys know where I'm looking, and I know that it's not palatable, so what's more palatable?
Well, I don't see, I don't see figures in the zeros, so what are the proposed figures?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Now, I wanna know, is it twenty, what, twenty-five hundred, two grand, five, five grand?
Am I pressing anything?
No, I'm not going for zero.
I, I think there's one, I think there's something I'd like tend to speak to the board about, and that is this beetle problem. I think that if we take, if we, if we look at it seriously, I went online and looked at it for a little while. It's not a problem that's gonna go away. I don't know what our percentage of ash is in Warren that affects highway, cemetery, parks, I don't really know what that is. But it is not a reparable condition to a tree, once the tree has the insect, it's dead. It doesn't live forever.
Well, I agree.
And so I think that maybe as part of his budget, I wonder if we shouldn't think of it as a separate line. Because eventually, the problem.
Eventually, well, go ahead.
If we cut every tree down that has the problem, it's gonna go away.
So your, your, your request, I'm sorry, would be to have a separate line for the ash tree?
Well, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out because it is a condition that the state now recognizes, like out in Colorado when they had their beetle problem. The state finally had to call, you know, they, they took notice and, and, and called state of emergency, and, and, for lack of better terms, I mean, they have a museum that's talks only about that beetle now in Colorado, and how it decimated their forests, so.
Let me, yeah, alright, well, why don't I?
I don't know, I, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, why don't I speak that, rather than doing that, cause if we, here's the deal, it's found, the, so the whole state's quarantined for animal dashboard right now. And unlike Asian longhorn beetle, which is the first beetle they found in Worcester, the, the meth, the preferred methodology, and they find that they, they cannot slow this or eradicate it, so it's here to stay, and they've just isolated us as far as quarantining our ash. So our ash will go by the wayside, whether it's five years, ten years, hasn't been found in Warren yet. When it is found in Warren, we, I, I would, I would guess twenty percent of our, of our trees that we have are pushing ash, I could be off, I haven't had, I don't have a full inventory, but the amount of trees that I look at versus, you know, maples versus oaks versus something else, you know, I know we have a fair amount of ash sitting in the woods, but I think close to twenty percent is what we have poking around that I'd have to deal with. If and when we find animal dashboard, they will, you know, quarantine, come in, we'll, we made it, it's our cut those down, that'll be a whole different method, it'll be more, more attuned to what happened in two thousand eleven with the ice storm and the cleanup there, that, that's how we'd deal with that. So I don't know if you wanna do a separate line item just for that, and only allow it, say, then I can only use this money towards ash, or just mop up some, a few dollars and, and.
Did the state have any funding regarding the Asian longhorn beetle removal?
Oh, yeah.
State assisting with that?
Uh, feds, feds actually, feds and state actually came in and assisted.
Are they assisting with this as well? And by having a line item of its own.
I, I think they are, but we, like I said, we don't, I, it hasn't been identified here, so until it's identified here.
Right, but if we, if, if we put that as a line item on there, then it's gonna be easier to appropriate that money to that line item if we ever get to that point.
Yes, I give you that, but until that point, my question for you is if we put that money in there, and then what if I don't have, what if I deal with all the ash, that I can't, we can't do, I can't use that two thousand dollars the following year towards maples or oaks or? It's.
Oh, you could ask for a transfer.
Alright, I mean, this is why I'd rather just put it in forestry and, and that, have a separate line item, because eventually, you're not gonna need it for ash, and then if it's allocated only for ash, what do we do then?
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, I mean, at one point, my, and I can get you the dates, and I can get you the rest of my budgets from when they were, Jim, so you have forestry on it.
Okay, so I know we spoke about this, but like long range plan, I know you get to talk about sewer, municipal building here, campus here, the cemetery net, what would you like to see over the next three years? You know, some of these bigger projects, I mean, the, the request now is just to do some pruning, but what about the bigger jobs that you say we need, we need to address? An article every year to try and address those, or?
And that's why, I'm not sure, you know, Barry gave me a different idea on it, I thought I was gonna come in and, I thought it was easy, budget came out, level funded, I'm sure no problem, I can level fund up my budget, and then come in with an article, that was my plan, is to come over the article and ask for ten grand to deal with some of that work in, uh, in the cemetery, this, this campus, and a little bit of sewer department.
For this campus and sewer, excluding the cemetery, what would that cost? The work can you do here in sewer, cause I know there's a lot of issues with the sewers and the limbs and that hanging over, and what is an estimate, a rough idea on that?
I think the sewer itself is pushing the eight to ten thousand dollar range. But I don't need to do it all this year, I don't need to deal with the whole cemetery this year, you know, if all of it can be at eleven hundred bucks a day, plus or minus a few dollars.
And sewer pay for it?
Sewer might be able to pull a few bucks out of their, of their thing and help pay for some of that, so I'm looking at, if I can, but if I can appropriate some money and apply some, then maybe they can pick up the other part of the tree, you know? I haven't been, been to see sewer yet.
Alright, just a question.
And I know, understand, I sat through the town special in the fall, I understand that, that they're, they're getting tomato slopped out of, and I understand there's some sort of issue going on there, I don't know what it is, I stayed out of that politics, so I haven't even, I haven't shied away from even wanting to use the word sewer department and trees.
I'm sorry, so then mine again for the, for here and there, your estimate again on that?
Eight to ten.
Ten, ten?
Ten.
Yeah. Thirty-nine, what was it, I'm sorry, thirty-nine for the cemetery?
Thirty-nine's right now.
Cemetery.
That's right now.
So, what if we went to the town and I would still like to see forestry increased a little bit to keep up with just the pruning on a, on a yearly basis and an annual basis, but to take care of some of these bigger projects, I mean, I'm all about trying to beautify the town and, and spruce up this town a little bit, and, and, and give us a little bit of a facelift and clean up some of these areas. Would twenty thousand cover cemetery here and there, if we had to put an article forward, or is it ten thousand, fifteen thousand?
I, twenty, I think twenty would definitely cover that, but, but I don't know if it's palatable.
I know, I know, I know it's gonna sell on the town floor.
Unlike where you three are sitting, I only see the two or three budgets that I have, that I'm working with, so I don't know what the rest of the horizon is, is looking at, I haven't even seen what the school's talking about yet.
I think we can, I think we can definitely get the cemetery, the cemetery accomplished, cause it is a danger, I think that's the definite, but that might get accomplished through FinCom in two weeks, so we don't know if that would be a transfer.
Right, but that's thirty, that's thirty-nine hundred.
Correct.
On an additional, I think there's another twelve to fifteen up there after that.
Correct.
Yeah.
But before.
So my question is, should I come a couple of years in a row with ten thousand dollar articles?
Twelve to fifteen hundred up there now?
Yeah.
Fif, twelve to fifteen hundred?
Thousand.
Thousand.
That's what I'm asking.
Thousand, yeah, I think there's twelve to fifteen thousand.
Thirty-nine hundred, no, twelve fifteen, that's.
No, no, twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen.
Thousand is what I think is up there right now. Now, maybe it's lower if we get a larger company to come in and, and do it one fell swoop, you know?
But even if we appropriate ten thousand dollars?
But there's, there's some places in there that I know that we gotta go with with a crawler, cause we can't get a bucket truck anywhere near the stuff because of the head stuff and stuff. So. So that was a question, you was finished, finished, even if we appropriate.
So I, 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 I mean, I'm in favor of trying to increase that item so we keep up on the pruning, regards to the, the thirty-nine hundred, I think we'll see what happens with FinCom, and I think there still should be an article put forward to address other concerns. Uh, I, I think we're really lax on the pruning and the, and the issues we have with a lot of trees in town, and I, I think it needs to be addressed.
So here's a pal, here's a question, palatable number, if I increase my regular budget by twenty-five hundred dollars, is that a palatable?
I agree to that, I, I'm, I'm good with that number.
I got no problem bumping it up by a number five.
If you're looking at ten or twenty-five?
No, 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 five hundred, make it three.
Make it three thousand?
Yeah. Oh, to three, Mr. LaMash, do you have anything on that?
No, twenty-five hundred sounds good to me, I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm good anyway.
No, I mean, the twenty-five hundred, it seems like a good number, I still wanna sponsor an art, I want you to sponsor an article going forward on the special.
Okay.
I, I first, before we put in a, a number to that article though, I need to know what happened with FinCom two weeks, we, we would need to know.
Yeah.
That's gonna change everything, but even regardless that the rats happens, I still wanna move forward with an article, even for this building, sewer, or the rest of cemetery or something. I wanna get it addressed personally, I mean, Mr. LaMash and Jim, you have a vote here, so your thoughts, you still wanna sponsor an article if they receive, if he receives a thirty-nine and a transfer, and a rat?
Yeah.
How about you?
He's writing the article.
I think he's gonna have.
Yeah, I'm writing it.
He's gonna have the money to do it, or do it.
It's gonna become a hazard, we're gonna.
That's why I'm here, you know, it's like, it's one of my last Tuesdays available, and I wanted to come and see me when you want mine? Yeah, so, it's like a kid.
So twenty-five and a hundred increase, finance for thirty-nine, and then once that's done, we'll come back and discuss an article I'm out for special?
Sounds fair.
For the other jobs, but, you know, I do wanna outline when the article is written, you know, let's say, stipulate what we're gonna go with it.
Oh, complete, it's not gonna be a ten thousand, it'll be ten thousand two words.
Hey, but five or ten, whatever, this is where it's gonna go, the scope of the work, and, you know, how it's gonna be broken down as to what services are gonna be taken care of, so the people know. Definitely wanna define the, the, the work.
Yeah.
Or anyone add anything? I'm sorry, no? Okay.
No, cause I know Tom took care of some parts over here that he and I agreed on, which worked out, and I just made it, made our neighbor happy. But I know that we have.
I know there's a tree over here.
We got, yeah, I know, I know, I know, there's a tree right there, I understand.
I hear about that tree every two weeks.
Don't, don't even do that.
No, so I understand it's more on the campus than we done here, I understand that, that's what I'm sort of getting at.
Alright, so we're good?
I, I, that's, are we good?
Are you gonna leave pesticide at five hundred?
Um, yeah, I've been leaving it at five hundred, it was higher when I first came on, I've left it at five hundred for some time.
How much have you expended on it so far?
This year?
Yeah.
None, every couple of years I get recertified. Maybe a hundred bucks, you know, it does cover it, at one point, we did buy, we at one point, we were working on a long range management plan and, and vegetative plan. That is since gone by the wayside, okay, I've got a, I've got a bin down highway barn and other stuff going on, but lots of the fifth guy and the change of highway boss changed plans down there.
What about hiring a new person, or is that not on the budget?
I'm sorry?
Hiring a new person?
For highway?
Yes, well, for, for, to help him, Steve's always done it.
I don't have anybody, I have a little person.
We've been using, we've been using highway.
Hire a person.
And that's the highway surveyors' responsibility.
No, I see, you said there was a five man crew, you lost a person.
Oh, I didn't.
That was highway, that was highway.
But at the time, when he had that, they, we overlapped pretty regularly, that he took, they, you know, they worked, we worked together pretty good on that stuff.
Of course, now you're creating a benefit position, it's, we'll give them the money for the tree work then. I don't want those increases anyway. Alright, so, you have anything else, anything else to add now? Just again?
Nope, I'm good.
Cool. FinCom, do you have any questions?
No. Just send this to, send this to Tim Bailey with your new amounts, please.
We'll do. Can you copy me and I took them, please?
Yeah.
Can you do, if you wouldn't mind?
Okay.
Yeah. Um, thank you for coming in, I appreciate it.
No problem.
That's about it, anything else, you have something else you need?
Oh, no, it's a copy, I was gonna give.
Oh, you, you're okay with me keeping you reasonable on this, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine with me, yeah.
I'll let you know on this one too.
Let me know if and when they do clear.
I have a meeting with Tanco next week here.
He's ready to go whenever you wanna start work on it.
Yeah.
Um, while I'm sitting here, under different hats?
The budget?
No, not budget stuff, did you wanna, you, you got everything else lined up with other planning board stuff, with that, the BOH border health thing that you were talking, we were talking earlier?
Can we do that? I know we're talking about Monday.
Yeah.
We're trying.
Okay.
Right, Rachel stopped in this afternoon.
Yeah, so I can't make it, we're trying to send another member over to.
And water is also, correct, that's what I got from Rachel today.
Okay.
I don't know if she reached out to you, and she stopped.
She did, no, I spoke with her, she, she.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna get somebody else from, from, uh, West Orange Water to commission, I think, right? She wants to, yeah, so I think we will, I think it's gonna happen.
Okay.
Uh, it needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to get all the parties involved, so we can figure out
Yeah.
if there's a resolution, or what type of resolution we can have to this water issue.
Cool.
So, yeah, we're working on it.
At least start the dialogue.
Yeah, and that's.
Correct, with all the writing parties, and that's everybody, you know, cause there's a lot of people that are involved with this.
Unfortunately, yes.
And, you know, and I take him putting the letter out, uh, it's up on the website regarding the testing.
Yeah.
We did, we did mention that tonight, so.
Good.
I don't know if we wanna add that to the website, it's fine, cable access on that. I don't know, have you had a lot of calls for residents up there since the letter went out?
Starting to come in, I mean, people are starting, they've been seeing them yesterday, today, I've been getting them at home, people that know me, asking the question, do we need to get tested, or not tested? You know, basically, if we sent you, if we sent you the, if we sent you the letter, it's a good idea, that's why we sent it.
Yeah, if they have the letter, you should get tested.
Yeah.
Rachel, Rachel was on me today, they're gonna do more testing up there?
DEP, DEP's working on, um,
You know, what?
They're still working that out, no, we don't know when, so they're still working that out in their department.
Alright.
When we know, we'll, we'll get it across to everybody.
Alright.
But she's gonna go with DEP when they go as a town representative.
Sounds like a plan, alright, we're good, thanks for coming in, I appreciate it.
No problem, appreciate your time.
Alright, anybody else, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing anything, you wanna copy this, you want that? Or regarding budget.
Could we also have the selectmen's budget sent back to us so that we can have that in our spreadsheets?
The one that you wanted to know.
You discussed, the one that you discussed tonight.
Well, we haven't, we, we will know more probably tomorrow regarding any salary changes, so, you know, wait till like Wednesday, Thursday morning?
We don't have to have it till the end of, till the middle of March.
Oh, you.
But that's what I'm just saying, we just need to have.
We'll have it more concrete a couple of days. That's sooner the better for me, sorry. I don't like to make them late.
So with you package, we can get rat stuff, is, did you rat form this again?
Is there anything else regarding budget discussions? FinCom, David, Mr. Blansky, I'm sorry.
I'll spit for now.
Alright, Bob? Yes?
So, does this mean that FinCom has approved our budget, or is there additional discussion that needs to be had, or?
Barry, well, they can't. I mean, are you, I'm sorry, Barry, are you gonna bring it up this Thursday, our budget, or as soon as you get our revised with that number?
No, we're not gonna talk about your budget this Thursday, we have specific things we're discussing this Thursday.
So probably in a few weeks, I don't say, hold on, and it finally gets approval, or voted on by their board, their committee. Okay, alright, we're done with budgets? Anything else? Treasury warrants?
So I'll send you.
Senator Gagner?
Yes, sir, make a motion to approve payroll warrant one sixteen in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents, and vendor warrant one eighteen in the amount of one hundred four thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents, both dated February twenty-second, two thousand sixteen.
How about second? Motion's made, seconded, discussion, seeing none on paper?
Aye. I will make a motion that we approve warrant number one seventeen in the amount of two hundred and forty-two dollars, dated February twenty-second, two thousand sixteen.
Second. Motion's made, seconded, on paper?
Aye. And I will make a motion that we approve warrant number one nineteen in the amount of one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, dated.
Motion's made, seconded, on paper?
Aye.
And drawdown fiscal year fourteen invoice number eight, services to administer fiscal year two thousand fourteen, grant number zero zero seven four one, parent reference number one four, Charlie Delta F seven four pound nine three, pay is PBPC, the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
How about second? Motion's made, seconded, any discussion, seeing none, on paper?
Aye.
I know, it just didn't come to me.
New business, Mr. LaMash, you have any new business?
Yes.
Go for it.
The plumbing company that's in the basement of the town hall, the old town hall, Friday and replaced all the drainage pipe they had that was running out, and that's all done, I'm just waiting for an invoice on that. And I gotta hold the company and the doors to make an appointment, do the oil materials, and as soon as they have materials, then they're gonna get hold and, and make an appointment to come down and put it there.
The hand cat door, correct?
Hand cat, down, yeah, yes.
Cool, good.
And that's all.
Mr. Gagner, anything new?
I do, I, um, made a request to look at the mill overlay district. And what I found when I looked at it was that the building across from Pulaski, the parking lot, and that little brick pump building are not included in the overlay district. Just so that people understand, as I said a few times, I spend a lot of time on my lunchtime driving around, calling out two companies. I have Bluetooth, so I'm not using my phone. And I'm trying to get anyone and everyone to be interested in that property to bring jobs to this town. I want every building available to me to do so. I believe it was an oversight when it was originally done. The planning board has looked at it, and they are meeting on Wednesday. I am going in on Wednesday, and I believe I'm bringing Tony Markcott from the owners of the building with me, and we are going to ask the town to include that property as well, because if somebody wants to take it all, then we want them to be able to take it all and do what they will with it. So that's gonna be coming up tomorrow. Oh, this is kinda old but new, because I just found out today, there is another meeting regarding the hospital that I will be attending tomorrow, and I will update people next week, 'cause it's election day, the week after. We're meeting on election day?
Next, super Tuesdays, next Tuesday.
So when that meet, March first?
It's the fourth.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that, when that meet, next Tuesday.
At the next Mary, I will keep everybody up to date.
With regard to your statement about the overlay district, are you talking about all of the property across, because there's more than just one building and a pumping station. There's another major building across the road from rights that needs to be in that overlay.
Is that the apartments near the river?
It was called Quabog, it was where the.
That's the building I'm talking about, that's the one building.
And then there's an office administration building over there, the, the old building that's at the corner is on that side of Pulaski as well.
When you take the left on Pulaski, there's the old Quabog building, there's the big lot, and then there's, isn't that the old pump building or something right there?
No, it's an office building.
That little tiny one?
It's an office building.
Okay, it's a small office. But yes, all that property should have been included in the original, so that if, medical office, if, you know, any brewery wants to put their offices over there, I just want it open. I need to be able to sell all of it. And that's it?
We're good. I just have, I guess it's like old new business, we got the, I got the animal control officers evaluation coming up. I actually received an email, somebody was requesting to be on the committee for reorganization of animal control, Palmer, there's gonna be a member, excuse me, from each town. So once again, if anybody's interested, contact our office, we do need to get a, a member on it, we're gonna be forming it soon, so.